Is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all in attendance. My name is councillor Talia Busan and I'm the Chair of the Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I will hand over to Democratic Services to read out the housekeeping arrangements. Claire.
Thank you Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting. No fire tests planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is the car park opposite this main building. Total facilities are straight through the door behind you on the right-hand side and through the other double doors. Meeting today is open to the public and we will be streamed live for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collection during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please do let us know. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Claire. Can I please ask members and officers around the table to introduce themselves? I'll ask you Claire.
Welcome to Democratic Services. Fran Belbin, councillor for First Park Ward.
Councillor Galloway, for Shaw Green, Brightside Ward.
Councillor Jindon, Southie.
Councillor Mike Chaplin, also from Southie. And I'm going to have to give apologies for leaving early as I've got a surgery at half past six tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Abdul Kiyum, councillor for First Park Ward.
Councillor Mark Jones, Burngree Ward.
Councillor Sophia Saeed, Burngree Ward and Deputy Chair of LAC.
Lindsay Hill, Light Manager.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, I would like to explain how the meeting will work. First, we will deal with the formal business of apologies, declarations and minutes of the last meeting. We will then move to the item of the North East Local Area Committee's spend report. The area manager will firstly give a presentation. There will then be a discussion debate and members of the committee will be asked to note the recommendation of the report. Next, there will be an update by the Parks and Countryside Service. This will be followed by a presentation of city goals. Then there will be an interactive session with the public participation. And finally, we will have a public question and answer session. Now, item number two, apologies for absence. Any apologies?
Received apologies from councillors Dawn Dale, Tony Downs and Absa Mohammed.
Thank you. Item three, exclusion of the public in press. There are no items that require the exclusion of the public in press. Item for declaration of interest. Anybody got any declaration of any item? Item five, minutes of the previous meeting. Can I ask member, are the correct record? It's on page nine. Any material rising on page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Thank you. Item six. Can I ask Lindsay to present this item?
Yep. So I've brought a spend report with me today, which will be asking the committee to know and agree some spend within that. Everybody will have got this within their pack, so if you want to have a look at it, you can. It gives further detail within it. So what we're asking for is to note the expenditure made in 2023-24 so far this year, which has been used to address local priorities and approves the proposed allocation of funding, which is the new £100k for this year for use against the local priorities for 2023-24. We've also got some surplus under spending there, which has been declared. And we've also got some committed spend there, which is from last year, which will be delivered in this year. So that's to be noted. To be agreed, the cost of living in March in the council meeting, they give £400,000 to cost of living to the LAC's funding. And that's been distributed. It's against what's called an index of multiple deprivation. So that's about deprived areas that get more and other areas that get slightly less depending on what that formula is. So for our allocation in the North East of that, we've got £90,000, which is quite a significant amount of that money. So what we're asking for is to agree, which went through the Finance Committee on Monday, is that £45,000 of that money will be used towards the City's Advice Bureau Advice Line to be able to give more support and help to our residents and people within the North East. So, thank you.
Anybody got any question? So can I ask member to note this? Oh, thank you. Next item, Parks update. Can I ask? Can I ask members to note and agree as respective recommendation? All agreed? Next item, Parks update is, can I ask Ruth and Stuart come forward and give us a presentation? Thank you.
Hello everyone. Sorry, I'm not really used to doing these presentations sitting down, so this is going to be a bit uncomfortable. For anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Ruth Bell and I'm Head of Parks and Countryside. I'll introduce my colleague. This is Stuart Turner, who's one of the service managers in Parks, responsible for improvement project. And I will just say that our colleague, Richard Juesbury, is here with us. He's an area manager that a number of you will be familiar with because he's involved in a lot of the parks in the area. We've just got a few slides to run through. We had a conversation with Lindsay and a request from councillor Hussain to come and talk to you about parks. To be honest, I could come and fill the whole meeting. We could come and tell you what we're doing, we could ask you what you want. But what we've done is we've pulled together a fairly quick presentation to go through what's happening in your local area. And I'm really hoping that this can be the first of many conversations because we know how important parks are to everybody in the local area. And we do really want the green spaces in your area to be a bit of a thread running through the LAC, as I know they are, but we'd like it to be involving us more going forward if possible. So if you can bear with us for this presentation, but perhaps consider it the first of many conversations that we have. We're just coming to give you information, but we suspect you've probably got a lot of questions, there's very specific stuff you'd like to know. And we will happily come back to any future meetings to talk about anything more specific that you'd like to. Is that all right? Next slide please. We always put this slide up when we come and do presentations to anybody that we've not talked to before because it's quite an interesting perspective of Sheffield that a lot of people don't have. You hear about parks and you often know what's in your local area and not necessarily outside of that. But even within your local area, people often don't know the variety of things that we as a Parks and Countryside Service are responsible for. People think of parks, they often think of the big parks. But we manage everything from the city parks that are spread across the city where we know that people travel to as a destination site, right down to really small areas of green space that are very valuable to the local community but often not known outside of that. And on top of that, we manage an awful lot of different things. So we are the Parks and Countryside Service and that does mean that in addition to your very traditional parks, we manage woodlands and countryside sites across the city, we manage fishing areas, where churches close their burial grounds, we take over responsibility for that. We're responsible for allotments. We've got a number of bike tracks across the city in varying degrees of difficulty or, as I call it, as somebody with a small child, varying degrees of terrifyingness, from very small bumps to really quite extreme bike tracks that attract people from inside and outside of the city. We have a number of cafes in our parks and that number is slowly increasing. We hope it will continue to go up because people do tell us that things that are very important to them in their green spaces are what we term the brew, the loo and something to do. So that is somewhere that they can get refreshment, somewhere that they can go to the toilet to help them stay in those green spaces longer and hopefully something to do and that varies from person to person, whether it's a green space to kick around a football or something a bit more interesting, climbing boulders, playgrounds and the like. Next slide please. Whenever we give these presentations, we also always go from the nice to the difficult. None of you will be surprised to know that Parks budgets, along with all city council budgets, have been cut over the last few years. This slide sometimes terrifies people because they don't realise that our budgets have been cut so much and yet we are trying to do more and more and we've been asked to do more and more. Our revenue funding in 2010 was around eight and a half million and it's, this year it's just under three and a half million. We have increased our income. I will say on this slide, people often point to the empty slot for 2010/11, that was not zero, we were already getting quite a lot of income. So the really key message there is that currently our income is not going up in line with our revenue funding going down. The reason we say this is because obviously you'll be aware that we're trying to do different things in parks, we're trying to work in partnership with people in a way that we haven't before. So there was a decision taken on Friday at the charity subcommittee that we will have a new model for tennis across the city. And that's a way in which we are working with an external operator to deliver a service so that we can have improved facilities and a better service for the people of Sheffield. The other thing is that we get a lot of external funding, so we're still able to do quite a lot, but very little of it is council funded and that's quite important to know. I will say that we've got a small budget, but we try and do an awful lot with it. The places that we're most successful is where we work with local people, local groups are often able to access funding that we can't. And wherever we're working with local people, we're very clear that we're delivering what people want, not just what the council think people want. And there is sometimes a difference between those two things. So I don't want to scare you with this, but I do want to sort of let you know that we wish we had loads of money, we wish we could do everything that we wanted in parks. It's not a reality, but we do try and do an awful lot with, not an awful lot if that makes sense. Next slide please. This is very specific to this LAC area. As a service, we in the past have measured the quality of our sites across the city. We call it the Sheffield standard. So you'll be aware that, you'll probably be aware that a number of our sites across the city, some of which are managed by Osneith, that are judged to have a certain standard and there are a lot of criteria that have to be met to achieve that green flag standard. What we have is a condensed version of that standard that we call the Sheffield standard. So a number of things that we assess on a site-by-site basis to say whether or not that site is achieving the Sheffield standard, whether we think it is a quality green space. In the North East LAC, there are 91 sites and they're different sites. So some will be really traditional green spaces and some will be much smaller, local areas that are only known to perhaps a few streets, for example. 67.7% of those achieve the Sheffield standard and there is one green flag in the area, that's First Park, a lot of you or perhaps all of you will know First Park. You can see from that map, there is at least one very big green space that doesn't achieve that standard and I think Stuart's going to talk about that a little bit later. We do have a number of projects that are looking at a number of sites within the North East LAC area where we are doing improvement works. Some of those we hope will lift that 67.7% up to a higher number because that's not a number that we're particularly proud of, there's clearly work to do. We would love it if everywhere had 100%. That's not necessarily easily achievable with the budgets that we have, but we would want at least 75% of the sites to be achieving that Sheffield standard. Next slide please. This is the key challenge that we're faced with. So in addition to declining budgets, the budgets that are going down year on year, either through the austerity that we've had for the past 10, 12 years, but also just because of pressures, just because we're not getting budget increases despite our costs going up, these are the additional issues that we as a park service are experiencing. You'll all be familiar with this if you visit any green spaces. And social behaviour, it costs a lot of money to keep sites safe and accessible for those that want to use them in the right way. Floral expectations, a bit of a strange one, but anyone that visits First Park will know that we do have some beautiful flowers in there. All of that comes at a cost. There is an expectation that we deliver something, that we continue to make those sites that have had very traditional planting, have some kind of traditional planting. It's getting more expensive year on year and we're trying to take steps to reduce the cost while still keeping the beauty of those sites. Facilities management, toilets, anything like that costs money and it's getting more and more expensive. That's why the sites where we've been able to engage really well with a cafe operator in whatever form that takes, be it a traditional building that's got a cafe on it or perhaps a mobile pop-up cafe, are quite successful because they can help us with some of those facilities expectations, opening, closing, cleaning those facilities to make sure that people can use them and use them safely. Popularity, we sometimes actually have a slide that's titled Covid, which it seems a bit strange to be still talking about Covid in 2023, but actually it's had a lingering effect on our park sites. You all, I'm sure, remember, particularly as we came towards the end of the first lockdown where we were actually allowed out of our houses but weren't really allowed near people, the rush of people into our green spaces was absolutely phenomenal and fantastic although very hard to manage. Anybody that reads the Star or actually even some national newspapers will remember the headlines showing that we were removing something like three and a half elephants with the rubbish from Encliff Park every single day because of the number of people going. What happened during that time was that a lot of people rediscovered or perhaps discovered for the first time their local green spaces. And whilst visitor figures to parks have dropped since Covid, they haven't gone back to pre-Covid levels, people are still wanting to use and visit their green spaces, which we're massively in favour of. But it does come at a price, more visitors means more rubbish. It also means more expectations. Since Covid, the number of people wanting to engage with us and the way in which people are engaging with us has changed. So people are talking to us more and they're wanting us to do more in their green spaces, which is great. And where we can facilitate that, that's absolutely brilliant. It's one of our budget challenges, but again, local people can help us with that. Then there's some nasty stuff around diseases. Don't worry, I am talking about tree disease, not people disease. We do have a number of issues in our trees across the city. Some of you may be aware of ash dieback. It's a disease that affects ash trees. We have a lot of ash trees across the city. The trees become dangerous to the point that we have to remove them. We've got a programme across the city that is costing us, it's costing us about £300,000 to £400,000 a year to remove those ash trees. And in a few years, it will be costing us over a million pounds to remove those trees. It's something that's affecting the whole country, but it may not surprise you to hear that we don't get any additional funding for this. So this is stuff that we're trying to mitigate from within service budgets, which is very difficult and has an impact on the other stuff that we can do. And then everything that is going up, just as the cost of living is impacting on everybody, it's impacting on the stuff that we do. So transport costs a bit more, it costs more to buy vehicles and particularly cleaner, greener vehicles. Staff costs more. Fuel and energy and building costs, all of that costs more and that's all costing more at a time where we're not seeing our budgets increased and occasionally we're seeing our budgets decrease. So it is a challenge. It's a challenge that we are trying to tackle head-on and trying to do what we can to bring in other sources of funding so we're not as reliant on those pots of money that have been shrinking year on year. Next slide please. This is the last slide that I'll go through with you before I hand over to Stuart. Stuart's got the last three slides of this presentation and his is the good stuff, his is the stuff that you'll be interested in, it's the things that we're doing in the local area to hopefully improve those green spaces. But again, just a few statistics in case anybody's interested, things that exist in this North East area, LAC area. So we have just one cafe in this area, I think we'd all like that to be more. I'm sure those of you that visit green spaces would like something that helps you have a cup of tea if it's a bit cold or actually perhaps a toilet if you want to stay a little bit longer. There are 20 playgrounds that we manage, some of which have been improved recently and a large number of which are on the list for improvements in the future. We have two skate parks, we have three tennis areas, I mentioned the tennis decision that had happened at the end of last week. We have 16 muggers, that's multi-use games area to the rest of the world. So that's often fairly flat tarmac areas where a number of different ball games and scooting and biking can be done. Two climbing boulders, four bowling greens that we maintain on behalf of the local bowling clubs, four bike tracks, we even have one golf offer within the area, 15 buckable football pitch areas, that's quite a high number in comparison to the rest of the city, and three cricket areas. The ecological value, I mentioned fairly early on that we are the Parks and Countryside Site, people often only think about the parks bit of that, but on the Countryside Site, we have 28 local wildlife areas within the North East LAC, four local nature reserves and four SSIs, which is Sites of Special Scientific Interest. So that is places where there are species of interest that are being monitored. Sorry? Orygiology, yes, being monitored and/or maintained. I'm going to hand over to Stuart now for the next slide and he's going to take you through some of the things that are happening in the local area and the projects that we've got ongoing and up and coming.
Hi, so my team support a lot of the playground improvements and playground management across the city. And then there's a number of project officers that support the green space improvements. And like Ruth has said, these days we're not doing this all by ourselves, we're working with councillors, with local groups, with national and regional organisations to support the types of improvements that we're now seeing in a lot of our green spaces across the city. So on the potter side of what's actually happening on the ground now, our sports and leisure colleagues are working at Pass and Cross, improving the football fields, they're fencing around them to protect them. And they're also creating what's called the Cruyff Court on the multi-use games area. So as you can see in the picture of the top on Pass and Cross, the tarmac there is going to get overlaid with a kind of a material to support football playing on that site. So that's going to be a really great fibreside court which we'll need to support and protect. And at the same time, we're opening up the fence lines a bit so it feels a lot more open and safe to use. There's a lot of challenges at Pass and Cross and social behaviour and we're slowly improving a number of the facilities, including the pavilion, the football pitches, the mucker, skate park recently as well, all trying to increase the number, variety of users of the site and thereby kind of, the more people that we have in our sites, the better really. It makes them safer and more enjoyable to be in. The other big project happening in the area is Parkwood Springs. There's a lot of work going on there at the moment to improve the access routes, improve the entrance facilities and also the mountain bike trails because it's quite an extreme sports style place as well. So the first phase of that is the walking routes and the bike tracks, they've been done. The next phase, which is, we've already got a kind of a digital picture of, is the, hopefully the next brew and the loo in the area, which is going to be a kiosk and toilet facilities along with improved changing facilities for the football pitches. There's going to be a phase three, which is the other issue with Parkwood Springs, it's a massive site, about the same size as Hyde Park. However, if you're on that site, I think you can quite easily get lost. So it's going to be improving the signage and the interpretation to help people navigate around that huge site as well. And then we've got a number of green space improvement projects that we're wanting to take forward. We've done a lot of work at the pavilion with the sports team, but we're also wanting to do further work to modernise the changing facilities there. And our sports colleagues are working on a Football Foundation bid to get the funding for that kind of improvement. At Elsmeares Park, we've been working with a lot of people in this room to get to a stage where we can get a new playground at that site and totally modernise and improve the basketball facility. And work is definitely starting on that site on the 1st of October, I understand. So that's been a long time in the making and it's taken a long time to get here and I'm really, really pleased that we've managed to get to this stage for such a quality site. If we're looking at sites in terms of stay clean and welcoming and accessible, which is what the Sheffield standard is about, having Elsmeares Park in its current condition is really, really sad. So this is the first real investment the site will have had for a long time and hopefully it won't be the last. As I've talked about, Parkwood Springs, there'll be another phase of improvements. We've got some what's called levelling up fund for Parks funding for Winkerbank Lane and some access improvements has already been made to that site, but there's further works of the playground and environmental improvements at the front of the site, which will also be made in the autumn period and winter period. Abbeyfield Park work, there's been with the Friends Group there, a real kind of drive to sort the dilapidated outbuildings from the main hall, if you know the park. So what we're currently embarking on now with our project officer support is a feasibility study to look at the condition of those buildings and how we can improve them for the vision that the Friends Group have for those buildings in that park. So Abbeyfield Park's a really important park and again, we're hoping that will be the, this will be the catalyst for further wider improvements that we'd like to make to a real gem of a site. Osgoodthorpe Park, again, our sports colleagues there are looking at another one of those Cruyff Courts that we're developing at Pass and Cross. And we're looking at a number of funding partners to help deliver that scheme, including the Cruyff Foundation. Concorde Park and Longley Park both have consultation processes that are just completed or on with at the moment, looking at a range of recreational improvements on those particular sites. They're really big parks in this area around the North East LAC. And Longley Park, when you look at it, it looks lovely, but when you look at the recreational offer, which I'm sure you'll be aware of, that looks absolutely appalling. So it's long-needed improvements to that particular facility at Longley Park, the play and recreational facilities there, totally an embarrassment, I think. And then Concorde Park, again, we're looking at, which is a city site with a great leisure centre next to it, really trying to kind of enhance the recreational offer there as well. Next slide please. I think I've covered quite a lot of the improvements anyway, but this has just shown some of the things that have happened in the area, the Winkerbank Lane, access improvements and what the Abbeyfield Friends Groups have recently accomplished, which is a new bread oven for the site, which is really amazing to see as well. Next slide please. And again, this is just looking forward, as we highlighted in the map of the quality of the green space at the beginning, we've got about 30 sites in the area that we really need to tackle in terms of quality. We've got a number of recreational facilities that we'd like to see improved. Yes, Busk Meadows is on there as well. I know we've had a number of queries about the quality and issues and Busk Meadows and trying to get the play facilities there. So we've identified that as a future priority, as a site we'd like to work on. As well as just improving things, we're also trying to take on board modern thinking and of how we do that so we're not just... So we're not just replacing like with likes. So we're looking at inclusion and accessibility of our sites and trying to improve that as much as possible. And hopefully you will have seen across the area, across the city, things like different types of seats to improve how we can get more access and inclusion within our playgrounds. But there's a whole range of things we're doing in that area. And the other area that we're really working on at the moment is biodiversity enhancement across the estate, including in the north east LAC area, and how we can improve the habitats there to support wildlife and biodiversity as well as continue to make these sites safe, clean, welcoming and accessible for all of us. That's us.
Thank you very much. Can I ask members, any question or comment to officers? Council agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Wolf Road Park in Parsons Cross Southie Wood had some investment a few years ago, which we lobbied for hard. However, the maintenance of the park needs a little be desired. You know, I have been emailing and I understand, you know, the restrictions. However, we've recently had a lot of residents contact me and they're really keen on setting a Friends Up Group, which we said would really help because we know funding, as you've identified, is an issue. Well, we've also got a lot of families with a lot of children with very complex needs. So having the improved accessibility would be really useful. I was just wondering, how do we kind of make sure that this accessibility is put in equally and not just by those who can shout loudest? Because it's great that we've got people wanting to set a friendship group up, but life is really tough for everybody and pressures. So I'm just kind of think, I think the members here would like to know. Thanks. I'm really keen on, I think it's great what you're doing by the way. So I'm not being critical. It's just, I was asked to ask these questions. Thank you.
So can I start by saying that we would welcome as many Friends Groups as we can get because they are a really useful way of us linking with local communities. So if you would like to get in touch, we will give you information to pass on to them so that they can be supported in setting up their Friends Group because it is something that can be daunting to people. But we've got resources in place that can help with that. Do you want to talk about accessibility?
And in terms of accessibility, I understand what you said about sometimes it can feel like people who shout the loudest get the most priority and focus. That can work both ways in the inclusion and accessibility. So where we are aware of families in an area who have been campaigning often for a while to see better facilities so their children can access that park and use those playground facilities, then we will try and respond as best we can to that. However, overall, we are working to, as we invest in sites, to, as a matter of course, change and improve the accessibility and inclusivity of those facilities. So when Elsmere goes in, we'll not be putting a raised roundabout in, it'll be floor level, for example. So that will just go as standard. With the swings, we're looking to provide a more kind of inclusive swings as part of that. So when new things go, when we're investing, we will be taking on board these ideas. Where we've got existing stock and there's no kind of sign of big money coming along, then it's part of the playground's team process of trying to ensure, for example, with swings, that there's some kind of seat that's a lot more inclusive than in each playground that we have around the city. But each one of those costs a couple of grand. So it does take a while to get that rolled out across the city.
Council, Mark Jones next.
Thank you Chair. Thanks for the presentation Ruth and Stuart. Really appreciate what you're doing in our area. Obviously it'll be delightful certainly for locality when the Elsmere is actually shovels in the ground and everything. That'll be really good for local communities. One thing that you did mention there was the handling of biodiversity and increasing biodiversity across the city, which we get because of the climate emergency and the biodiversity issues we get. But if you look at parks like Wensley or Denholm specifically, what we tend to get from the residents is where you've got encroachment of the shrubs, weeds, other things when the vegetation starts. And the mowing regime feels like it kind of re-shrinks in. So the actual accessible play area decreases over time. And we know that those areas, certainly along Roman Ridge and that, are being managed for biodiversity. But how do you think, is there a better way of getting a balance between improving that biodiversity but also making them safe, accessible spaces? It's a Denholm, great investment, £30,000 four years ago now maybe. But the memory of some strange man lurking in the bushes and jumping out at a young girl still worries parents. So unless we start making them absolutely safe spaces for people, it will always fail. So how do we get that balance right? And what can the Friends Of Groups do to help change some of those maintenance regimes to make it better for them?
I think one of the key things is talk to us because we may not have the memory of four years ago of that strange man lurking in a bush. Biodiversity does not come at the expense of safety. We will always try and maintain sightlines. And there are some sites where that's more important than others if there aren't as many eyes on the park. So it's not one or the other, it should be a balance between the two. I'm happy to hold my hands up and say that we don't always get it right. I will also say that this year, we have had problems in parks. So some of you may be aware that in some of our parks, it isn't a man going around on a mower, that's sexist, isn't it? It isn't a person going around on a mower, it's a tractor that goes around and cuts the really large areas of grass. I actually met a gentleman in Osgathorpe Park three weeks ago. He wanted to talk to me about what I thought was going to be a conversation about where we'd been relaxing the mowing. So where we were purposely not mowing in order to encourage biodiversity and improve that in that area. And actually, it wasn't. The areas that we aren't mowing are fine, they're looking good. And there are areas that are on a slope that people don't access. But actually, we haven't done a good enough job mowing. We had a sickness issue in the team that led to mowing being done late in a number of areas across the city. And actually, you've probably all noticed if you've got any green space of your own outside the back of your house, that grass has been growing like crazy this year. So even our regular mowing regimes have not been keeping up with it. So I do think the thing that I would say here is talk to us. We don't always get it right. But local people are the best people to tell us if we're not getting it right. And let's have a conversation because it's not one thing or the other. It's about striking a balance. And it's not just a balance for us, it's a balance for the local community as well.
Just come back on that. When you spoke to Bilal in Osgathorpe, did you pass on any information about becoming a Friends Of Park? Because I know that's one of our next targets.
He has followed up with me. And yes, I'm going to put him in touch with Karen from our team, who's going to support him in that. I got to visit on a really sunny, beautiful day. I know that you got to walk around the park in the pouring rain. I think I got the better deal there.
Just on the biodiversity front, I'd say that the north east LAC area, if you remember the maps earlier, is actually blessed with significant habitats and biodiverse areas, which is really great. But in terms of, we haven't got it right, sometimes the design of a lot of the spaces, including Parsons Cross Park, means that they're not very visible for a lot of people. It's a huge site, but you wouldn't even know it existed unless you actually go through one of the narrow entrance gates to get in there. So sometimes the design of sites doesn't really help the way that people feel comfortable and safe in that. So we're doing a number of things, including the way housing is designed onto Parsons Cross Park to help kind of improve that kind of eyes and windows onto a site. Because eyes and windows changes the way people behave within a green space, hopefully for the better rather than for the worse. But in sites like Denholm where there's kind of a history of where the trees and the shrubs have grown up on that site and the encroachment that's happening, I think there's probably at some point when funding allows a redesign needed for that site to really get it more visible and make it feel a bit more comfortable for people.
Council, get around the wall. Officer members.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Thanks for that. Thanks Ruth for your presentation. It would have been handy for members to have these slides. Because it's all right knowing what's happening in my patch, but it's three other areas. And it's just been nice to know what's going on and all. So that'd be handy for all members to have that. And by among the things, I just want to say that, you know, echo what you're saying about Friends Group and Tara's. You know, you're the lifeblood of Sheffield. Because, you know, the litter pickers groups and everything else we have, it's fantastic to see you out there doing day art and feeding all that back in, not just to councillors but to officers as well. So that feedback is really nice. Running the bush, Marg. Stranger to mention that. It has been a problem right across the country, this has. But there's a local, I think it's, just forgot her name now, the mayor, Nov, Nov. I forgot her name. But anyway, she just organised it today that there's a new campaign right across, you know, and it's a leaflet to get out of here. And it's a bit upsetting with her. I hope you've seen the video. But it's boys going up to girls in parks and saying, hey.
Tracy Braven.
Tracy Braven. That's right. I forgot her name. Should I? I'll get excited for that. But it's a brilliant video and I think we ought to get that and put it on our website. You know, it's really powerful. In fact, it's upset my wife. She said, look, I should really be watching that. I said, but that's, we've got to put that message out there. That's the message. You know what I mean? Dieback, Ash Dieback, how do we as laypeople get the diagnosis? I've been saying there's one behind me for years. And they've been coming out, I mean, leaves were, you know, on Ash as big as this. You know what I mean? Now they're half this size and it's been dead wood and everything. They've been out three times and looked at it in the same time. Got dieback, Ash dieback. I'm not happy with that. Where do I go, you know, to get that? Thank you Chair.
Come to me, contact me. I will say that it might not be Ash dieback, it might be something else. And it might be something else that doesn't make it dangerous. The thing with Ash dieback is it makes the trees prone to failure, I think is the technical term, i.e. they can fall. So if the team has been out, I would say that our tree team are absolutely fantastic and they know what they're looking for. That doesn't mean that there isn't a problem with the tree, it just might not be a dangerous problem. So send me an email and I'll look into it.
Chair, yeah. Well, thanks for that. I will do that. Because it's, when you look on site of Ash dieback, it's got all the traits of Ash dieback, dead branches. They've come out and took them down a couple of times. You know what I mean? But it's a huge tree. You know, it's three times the size of this building, right? You know what I mean? So and if it goes, it's going to take some properties with it. So I will do that. Thank you.
No indication from members, so I'll take questions from members of public. Anybody got any question or comment for the officers from floor? Any? Lynn. Can you shout your name and ask us to?
Right. I'm Lynn Brandon. I'm a member of Friends of Abbeyfield Park. So it's great to see a few references Abbeyfield Park. But I will say, it's taken a long time coming. I know Covid happened, but we have been working on this for about, well, I've been working on it for six, seven years. So it's good to see some developments. And I think it's been really important that we've actually had the support of a project officer because that communication, that liaison really makes a difference. And I think sometimes whatever project you're working on, you need to know who to contact in the council. So it's good that things are happening and I'm glad you liked our bread oven. I wanted to ask us how you actually make decisions about where the investment goes. Because obviously I'm speaking from perspective of Abbeyfield Park, but Burngrieve is an area of great deprivation. There's lots of needs in the area. I understand that some public health money has gone into parks and obviously health inequality is a big issue. And I think sometimes people say, well, why have they got this? And why haven't we? Because even though we're very, very grateful for the work that's going on in Abbeyfield Park, we know there's a lot more to be done. You know, we can't use the mucker because it's all broken with roots of trees. A lot of the pavement's in a really bad state of repair. We always have a problem with drainage in some of the grassed areas. I could go on and I'm sure other people would go on about their parks. So I'm just wondering, you know, sometimes we feel that a decision's made, but we don't always know how it's made. Thank you.
I think probably one of the key things to say is, and this is quite hard for us as a service, is that we're often not spending our money. So when you say what decisions are made about what funding goes where, on a lot of it, we don't have a great deal of choice. Section 106 funding, which has funded a lot of improvements across the city, is area specific. So it's not, if we get money in Burngrieve, we can't spend it in any of the parks, for example. So a lot of it is dependent on what funding is available and what that funding can be used for. I will say that Stuart's got some very small team with a very long list of projects. And there are kind of three phases to those projects. The stuff that we're doing, the stuff that is up and coming and then the massively long list of what we want to do. And often things move from one list to another based on funding that is available. So it isn't, please don't think that it's the council spending its own revenue budgets and working out where it's going to go. That's not what the majority of it is. We do improvements based on funding and we do maintenance based on need. And it is often based on the most critical need. You'll all be aware of parks across the city where issues have been reported because we just don't have the money to do the stuff we'd like to do. We're often only doing the stuff we really need to do. So what I would say is, and Abbeyfield Park, obviously you've got Claire working with you now, which is absolutely massive because you're right, knowing how to contact us is quite difficult. Knowing where you are on the list of our priorities, we do appreciate it, is difficult. But having that project officer will allow her to look at the park as a whole and work out what needs to be done. Even if it's not stuff that ends up being a current project, she'll put it on the list. And when funding becomes available, there'll be conversations had about it. I've said this at previous other LAC meetings. Feel free to contact us. We wish we could do everything and we can't. But there are some stuff that we simply don't know about. So feel free to talk to us. If there is Friends Of Groups in your local park, please do talk to them if you're not a member of it. Because they speak to us regularly and we hear from them if there are things that we think they need doing. Does that make sense?
And then there's also things like random funding that comes in from a whole variety of national sources. A recent one has been player zones. And we looked at a number of sites, quite a few sites in the north east area, including Abbeyfield Park as a potential player zone site. Unfortunately, it hasn't been very, the funding hasn't been very flexible in terms of how that money can be used. So we've ended up from 20 potential sites going down to one park site that's been proposed for a player zone.
Hi, my name's Margaret from Friends of Concord Park. I know we've got consultation, what's come to the end now. And for some reason, you're pushing the pump track onto us, where the pump track is not the main priority of things we need in the park. We've already got a bike track in Concord Park, what's not used. So you put in another bike track and skate track into the area where on Saturday I walked around the park and never saw one child on a bike.
I think you can talk to Jo here, I think. I think you can talk to Jo here.
Yes.
Yeah. She was talking about it before and saying that you'd raised that issue and that she thought we needed to look at it and understand what the community need. We don't want to impose something on you that isn't wanted. What we want to do is talk to the community about what they want. I will say that if there is a good pump track, which, we're trying to move away from the word in pump track because it's not a good description of what it is. What we mean is in all wheels park and area where people can use all different types of wheels because it isn't just bikes, it's often scooters and things. I will say that having those areas does it often include the number of people that are on bikes with better facilities. So it's not necessarily, in fact, if there wasn't anybody on a bike, doesn't mean that people wouldn't be interested. But we do want to work out what is wanted and needed from the local community. So I think Jo is planning to come and talk to you further about whether or not the consultation that we've done is asking the right questions and reaching the right people.
Right, okay. Right, okay.
Watek Gavah, the Chair of Wensley Tenants Association.
Can you tell us...
Watek Gavah, the Chair of Wensley Estate area. Thank you to yourself and your presentation, it was a wonderful presentation. I also would like to, that was what the councillor, Mark Jones, pointed out. We have been trying repeatedly to talk about shrubbing some of the shrubs back because it was obviously overtaken to the part that we worked hard to actually get built. So I would like that, if possible, that we can contact and we can get that shrub to back up or maybe the new plan to be involved in that. Because definitely it's a big issue with lots and lots of stuff that's happening behind, in the field or forest or the bushes that are seen to be growing out and closing onto the park. We've had benches that were for elderly to come and sit where they feel uncomfortable because it's just too overcrowded. So really we appreciate that. And thanks to councillor Mark Jones and all the councillors who worked hard on this point. Thank you.
I'm just going to point to my colleague, Richard Duesbury, who is shrinking down on his seat a little bit. Richard Duesbury has just taken over as area manager of the north. So he's getting himself up to speed on all of the sides. If you want to contact me and my email address is my first name dot my last name, so ruth.bell@sheffield.golf.uk. I will, in that case, pass it straight on to Richard, who will come and talk to you about what is happening at the site and what needs to change.
Yeah, evening, my name's Pete Thorney. I'm the Chair of Squathwood Drive, Tara. And ours is a parking and a traffic question. So whoever, people are going to talk to about it basically. We're the closest people to the Sheffield Wednesday ground. So we get a huge amount of cars below, apologies. We're only a one-road estate, but virtually everyone in the estate is either elderly or disabled. And most people are set back, so it's already a parking problem. And we've had an issue before where ambulances can't actually get up the streets because people are parking on both sides of the road. So A, can we look at turning into a 20 mile an hour zone? So you're a one-road estate, there's no way through it, so you already come onto it if you're visiting. Traffic line, double yellows at one side, and/or being able to do a road closure on match days. So that if the residents do have issues, ambulances can actually get to them.
This feels incredibly slow, we should all do it. But I'm afraid the limits of what they allow me to talk about is parks and countryside. They don't let me talk about traffic and roads. But I know the councillors and the lack managers will respond to you on that.
Well, that other question, you know, if it's not park and countryside related, those questions we're going to take after the break. Thank you very much, Chair. I would like to ask you one question. Is Devon Park, which is in Burngreeve, I think that's green flag site, is that correct? Because they have been nominated last year or the year before. Devon Park, it's a small, Devon Garden? Yeah. It's a small pocket park, but you know, that was...
Yeah, so is that a community green flag?
Yeah. So it's not mentioned here, so that's why I wanted to highlight because they awarded a couple of years in a row, green flag, so.
Sorry, that's an omission. So the stuff that I talked about around the green flag is the sites maintained by us? There are a number of sites across the city that have green flag status that aren't maintained by us. So sorry, yes, it's a site not maintained by us that has green flag.
We can add it in.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think, anybody got any more question? No? Thank you very much, this, okay, last question.
Hello, my name's Muhammad Ali, I'm a teacher by profession. I represent the end of education. I'm not sure if, was mentioned earlier, so I wanted to understand what was the plans, if there were any plans about this building here, Vashi Hall.
Well, I asked earlier, you know, if you've got questions related to park and countryside, you can ask now. Otherwise, there is a time where question and answer session is at the end of meeting.
Right.
We will give you time, that's the problem. Thank you, that was an opportunity for the local members to hear. Thank you very much for your time and presentation, well done, thank you. Next item is City Goals and Roading.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody. And thank you for inviting us to do this afternoon. My name's Laurie and I'm the Head of Policy and Partnerships at the City Council. It's really good to be up in the best of all. I've been here multiple times for all sorts of public meetings, it's really good. And apologies for the laceration, it was one of those things where it was just sort of managing between work and here as well. So I'm here to talk about the City Goals. And I talked to the Chair and to Lindsay beforehand and I'm going to speak only very, very briefly. Because what I'd really like to do is when we get into the sort of, into the engagement bit of the Euro Meeting this evening, and I've got a standover there and if people want to come and have a chat with me, talk about what we've been doing on City Goals, I'd really welcome that in some ways. It's a lot better to do it like that than to sit here and talk at you because I don't really want to do that. The key things I want you to walk away with from this five minutes I've got here tonight are a couple of things. One, to know what City Goals is and why we're doing it. And two, to think about what we're going to be doing in October and really wanting your input and your involvement in that. And then three, to just tell you what we're going to plan to do next after that. So the first thing is, what's City Goals? Well, C goals is what is a quick way of describing, trying to set out for the city of the things we're trying to achieve as a whole place. And it's not, I'm from the council, but it's not the council that are leading this. I work for a team that are part of the piece of work, but really it's been led by you, the community, by citizens of Sheffield, by the partners who are like the police, the fire, the universities, the teaching hospitals, the voluntary sector organisations. It's been led by the community and it's a big collaborative piece. So it's something that we are part of and we're one voice in that as a city council. The second bit is, what it will give us is hopefully a clear plan, a long-term plan for Sheffield. So it should be able to something that you should feel proud of and some ownership over that makes you feel like this articulates where you think Sheffield's going. It tells you, it says what you think about the city, what you love, what you hate, what you want to see change and what needs to improve over the coming 20, 30 years. And it should be something that's collaboratively owned so that partners can stand behind it as well. So the university, the teaching hospital, the city council, we should all be able to say the same things about where we're saying Sheffield's going to be in the years to come. And that should help us then, plan, invest, and also attract investment from people like government, from businesses and from other funding bodies as well. So it's a really important step to tell the story of what we're about as a place, what we really all love about being and living in the city and what a fantastic place it is to live in every community in Sheffield. And also what we want to see change and how that should feel like for everybody and how everybody should be involved, it's got to be inclusive going forward. So that's really what it's about. To date, we've done all sorts of conversations with communities across the city. I know members have been involved, I know that people in this room have had contributed in some form or other, either through a local community conversation with a lead by a voluntary organisation or something like an online survey. There's multiple things that have happened and it's been really rich. And if you look on my stand when you come over and have a chat afterwards, I've got a little pack of cards which tell you some of the statistical data we've gathered about what Sheffield's like, but also what people have told us. And it'll come as no surprise, and interestingly given the slight pack of the conversation just had, the things people really love are each other. People love their communities, they love the people they live around, they love their neighbourhoods and they really want to see people thrive and do well. But they also love their parks, their green spaces, the things that really make the city what it is. They love the district centres, the things that are about your local high streets, the things that give you all places identity. And they also told us things they want to see fixed, transport, big things like buses, public congestion, traffic and street scene issues in local neighbourhoods, big things like that. So we're hearing loads and loads of voices and really it's been, I think, even the survey had like one and a half thousand people, but then multiplicity of conversations across communities across the city. So there's a bit of, there's a piece of work going on now where a mix of organisations and community groups have been helping to take everything we've heard and do a thing that was called making sense of it really, trying to understand what that means. What does that tell us about the sort of goals we should have as a city? And starting to draft, to turn those into some things that make sense really as a set of goals, things to aim for to Sheffield. So that's happening at the minute. The next step on that road is that in October, we'll launch another public conversation. So we'll put them all out there and let anybody contribute and start to chip away at whether they make sense to you, do they sound like Sheffield? Do they live up to the expectation you've got about where the city's going? And what, this is a sort of a precursor for that really. I'm trying to whet your appetite for getting involved in that conversation in the next months really. And we can come back here and do it, we can do it outside of this sort of space, but have events in Burngreeve and in the north-east. But also there'll be stuff online about that as well. And then over the coming months, there'll be a process where we take that, everything we hear again, finalise what those goals look like. And then hopefully all the organisations in the city, including the council, but all the other big institutions and the voluntary community sector organisations as well, will take on those goals and say, yes, this is what we think future Sheffield looks like and this is our part in delivering it. So putting my council hat back on, maybe I should put my helmet on, but I could have done that. Put my council helmet on. The thing for us would be, can we articulate in our council plan, you know, the plan for what Sheffield City Council's going to do over the next four years alongside our budget, alongside every contribution that every member of staff and every service makes? Can we articulate and can we set out what our role is in contributing to making those goals real? And that's really it. I'm not going to say much more. I really value anybody who's interested, come and have a chat with us. You can rifle through the cards and see what some of your fellow citizens have been saying. You can come and have a look at the pictures I've put up on the wall about what's going on as well. I'm really happy to come and chat to anybody. And do anything more outside of this if you want to do that and you want to link me up with people that you know who might be interested. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you. Eh? Can I also throw in a bit?
Thanks, Laurie. Yeah, I do think this is a really exciting piece of work, I think, that is looking at where the next generation for Sheffield. So I think it's been great, it's great that we've got young people here today who can feed into that. But I think some of the process that we've been through so far has been very much about trying to talk to the people that we don't usually talk to and don't usually get to input into these conversations. So I do think we can probably take that forward as well. So one of the things I know I did, I woke up at Pittmore Adventure Playground. We had young people who attend the playground having a conversation about what they want the city to look like. And I know we've done quite a lot of work with young people, communities of interest and so on. But I think, and do come and have a chat with Laurie about it. If come October, you want to have more of those group conversations, because sometimes they can be really valuable in terms of where we're going next with this and what your picture of the city looks like, then by all means, you know, it doesn't have to be just filling in a survey, which is sometimes the traditional way we've done these kinds of consultations, if, fill a survey in somewhere. I think we've approached this really quite differently and we're really keen that we continue to do that. And so if you want to arrange conversations with your community group or with a bunch of people in your area to talk about this work, then by all means, come and talk to us about it because we'd love to take that forward.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any more comment? No.
It sounds like a wonderful project, wonderful idea, where we collate information. And then you've mentioned a couple of times, it goes to another committee where it filters that information. And then another meeting and what's the, what is the plan afterwards? Where, what happens with when you have a strategy where people are all singing from the same hymn sheet? All about this. Because obviously we're meeting, we need to change from petrol to electricity. We need lots of stuff that's happening and changing. Where does it end? Where does the light come at the end of the tunnel?
Thank you.
It's a great question, it's a great question. Because it's great having, strategy's brilliant until you get to the point where if you haven't got the capacity, the capability, the money, the investment, the plans to do anything about it. And that's back, that's on us as a city then. This is something that's come from the people and from our organisations in the city saying, yeah, this is where we think Sheffield needs to go over the next 20, 30 years. Climate's part of that, absolutely, climate action. That just transitioned to how you adapt to a very rapidly changing climate and how you make sure that there's no disenfranchisement is part of that and that not everybody's got an equal chance to make a choice in some of that space as well. So our organisation, like Sheffield City Council, I can probably speak from the place that I work, it's our job then to say, what are we responsible for? And over that 20, 30-year time horizon, what are the things we can do as an organisation to start making real change and actually contributing to those things? So see this as a sort of a plan for the city, if you will. And what you'd expect is action plans, things that are investment underneath it. So the city council's budget in the next four years, we should be able to show, demonstrate how we're trying to achieve the things that are in the City Goals. And you'd hope that every other organisation in Sheffield, like the teaching hospitals, the police, will be able to start articulating that as well. What's their role in enhancing where Sheffield's going to be over the coming years? And that's the job. And as ever, as somebody who does strategy for a living, that's the hard bit. It's how do you turn ambition into actual delivery that makes real change for people in the city? And that's the thing.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Oh. No. Well.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks for that, thanks for that, Laurie. For those of you that are here now, this is a really important moment to have Laurie here to actually make sure that the rest of the city understand what Burngreeve wants. We're the heart, the beating heart of Sheffield as far as I'm concerned. This is the most important area that we have in the city. We are right next to the city centre, we've got a vibrant, diverse community, we're full of ideas and full of energies. And far too often, there's other people in other parts of the city that will make loud voices and decisions that adversely affect us. With having Laurie here today, it's really important that he gets to hear what you want and what you think the city should be better as, how it should be. Because we can then form a view of the city that is working for us, not for those on the other side of the city, but here. So if you can talk to Laurie and help give him a bit of advice and a bit of a, just give him as much of your mind as you want, he's able to. It's really, really important. Whether it's from cleaning the streets better, fixing potholes, getting rid of unwanted elements on the street, whatever it is you want, just let him know because that way it helps inform the council's wider strategy better than some of the more comfortable areas with different priorities than we have, for instance. So we definitely take advantage of him while he's here, if you can, in a nice way.
Thank you, thank you. I think many people are going to speak to him to help shape our city. Now is the break, it'll be roadshow interactive session. You can talk to other organisations as well at the same time. And we'll be back quarter to seven for the question and answer session. And petitions. Anybody got any petition now? Is then public questions. So please clearly state your name and which area do you live when you ask question? Any question? I think people do. People raise their hands to ask question. Can you take it?
Yeah, hopefully I'll say things in the right place now. My name's Pete Thorney, I'm the Chair of Squathwood Drive Tenants Association. So basically it's a parking and speed problem on the estate. It's only a one-road estate just by the football ground. And most of the houses are all offset, so there's already a problem with parking. But on match days especially, we've had problems where two people have died recently and they couldn't get an ambulance up to them because people are parking on both sides of the road. And as we, unfortunately, people are dying a lot quicker on the estate. So some of it, could there be double yellow lines at one side of the estate? And who would we need to talk to about that? Is it Amy, is it council? Matchday parking, could we, for example, have a road closure that day and how that works? And also could we get 20 mile an hour speed signs up because people are going up that road far too fast?
Thank you, councillor General.
Sorry, I've got biscuits. Yeah, can I support the tenants? This has been going on for years and we know it's a complex problem. However, it is just off the main road and it feels like their home is used as a car park. And I mean, it really, really is and it's been getting, you know, and we do have a lot of elderly people on there, some quite vulnerable people. And it really is... lot of elderly people on there, some quite vulnerable people, and it really is becoming unsustainable. I would really like it if we as a like could write to Sheffield Wednesday and just see if they can do absolutely everything. I mean, I know that our MP is writing, but I do think as a like, you know, I mean, this isn't underestimating the great work that Sheffield Wednesday do in our community, we're doing lots of other things, however, that shouldn't be at the expense of overlooking things like that, you know, like all the parking and everything else. So I just think we could do something just to support them through and maybe have somebody go and look at the traffic calming measures in the area and just see, because when we had the meeting, we did explain that sometimes you ask for WLO lines and it actually makes it really hard the rest of the time that you're living there when people want to visit, but I do think we do need it looking at quite urgently because somebody is going to end up not being able to access with emergency services. So I fully support you Peter, yeah.
Thank you very much. Are we going to pass on your question to highways and ask officers, they're going to write to highway and they're going to respond to you directly? Shall we answer in next meeting? Councillor Apple.
This is a bit kind of off the wall suggestion, have you heard about what we do for school streets? Right, so for school streets what we'll do is we'll put in traffic order where we'll close down a bit of the street, effectively put a barrier on the road. The schools usually take leadership on this, but I'm kind of wondering, because you're part of the Tenants Association and you're obviously tenors there, I'm wondering whether we could maybe look to transport to see if there's anything they could do about allowing us to temporarily close the road. It may be a case of actually, maybe to have some physical infrastructure put in place, but in the first part it could just be a case of putting cones down and actually saying this road is now closed with some signs up, so... That's why I'm thinking, I think if we can... Yeah, I think it wouldn't need to be that way, I think it would actually be, as we do with school streets where we simply say, on these times, on these dates or whenever, and obviously we'd want some flexibility, but on school street they shut it every school day. So maybe that's something we should ask them to see if we can look to use those existing legislations in a slightly different context.
Thank you very much Chair, we'll reply to your question. Next question, the young man.
Hello, I represent Learning of Education and we, and multiple other...
Excuse me, can you tell us your name?
Sorry, my name's Muhammad Ali, I represent an organisation called Learning of Education and I've been liaising with multiple other charity groups that want to look into warm banks and food banks as well, who want to look into, well, mostly thinking about this particular building here, Vashi Hall, and probably the concerns people have had regarding access to this building and utilising this building. So of course I've been hearing a lot about people making changes and making access to new places, new buildings and new projects, but we've got existing buildings that are almost unused and I just wanted to look at the possibility of using such spaces like this, making it more accessible to the community, to local organisations, local charities and maybe private businesses as well, making it more accessible. At least in my personal experience, I know some people have had more successes, but my personal experience it seems to be very difficult to get access to this building, to get even higher pay to use this building unless you've got somebody who's in the know and sometimes the people in the know are busy, right? And even then it seems to be tricky to just get through the door, as probably some people have noticed, when the door was locked as soon as this meeting started. And yeah, that's pretty much it, because like I said, I live kind of stone's throw away from here and I can see the potential in this place. This place has been promised for a place of youth services, promised for the community, you know, we've got, as you know, a lot of people, elderly people in the area who just can't leave their building, would like to walk around the streets, would like to for example access Tesco for example, but just now, of course because that main place has been locked off, now need to go through the main carway, but just are far too afraid and rightly so to go there. And so we've kind of, we have the idea for example maybe getting volunteers to get something from Tesco and they would come here and pick such stuff up, so that's one of the charities that we're looking at, trying to provide these services. For me, like I said, there is so much potential in places like this and I'm sure I've seen in other areas too, they've got these spaces already readily available and I just wanted to see what can be done to help, thank you.
Thank you very much. We can ask housing, management of, you know, property facilities, so we'll ask how they can help us to open this building for the community. I think it's already booked, but if it's underbooked then we can ask them, you know, to give us access, so we'll write to the property facility. Fran.
Yeah, I think one of the difficulties for this building is that there isn't the funding to have a permanent receptionist on here to let people in and out, so the management of access is via staff at the library, which I know does make it more difficult. I mean, the space is available for hire and so on and I think especially when you're talking about things like warm places, the LAC team, we do have grant funds available for welcome places, if you're looking at setting up a particular activity, then it's worth talking to the LAC team about whether there's any funding available that would fund the hire of the space so you can make use of it. I think, you know, while we haven't got someone on reception, obviously different volunteer groups and so on can make the access work if they've got enough people to make sure there's somebody on the door and all those kinds of things, so encourage us to come and have a chat with the LAC team about some of the projects you've got in mind as well because you've got some brilliant ideas there, thank you.
Margaret.
To get in, oh sorry, it's not always easy to get into the building actually by booking it because it's used a lot for different council meetings, with different staff meetings that have been going off. And we do use it as a TARA centre because we don't have our own building at the minute, but we are having difficulty finding out for definite whether the kitchen is now available for use because it wasn't and we need to order our AGM next month here. So we need to find out as well, because we wanted to do a warm space but we left it because of the summer coming in, but we're going to look into that as well, we wanted to do a soup kitchen here, so just another point of view.
Thank you very much, anybody else? Oh, okay, Jen?
It's not from me, it's from a constituent of mine who wanted to get this evening but can't, but sent me a message earlier. It was, I just think it's really good for them that they want to watch it back to know that if you can't get here, you can still ask your question. I mentioned a group earlier when we were talking about the parks, but what they've asked for is, could we possibly get some funding for them to help do litter picks to clean up in Wolf Row Park? I've got the contact details, but I just think since they've just messaged, it'd be really, you know...
Yeah, just to say as well that there's still money left in from last year to support volunteers and litter pickers, so that the like has already got that as green as a priority, so we can do that.
Brilliant, okay, I'll pass everything on when I get back, but he just like literally messaged me on Facebook, so, okay, thank you. It's a Mr Nicholson if you want to record who asked the question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any more question now? So thank you very much for your attendance and meeting is closed, thank you.